Good evening, Director, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this March 23rd, 2021 Committee of the Hall Meeting to order. Director Pauli, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson.
Here.
Director Alamin.
Here.
Director Aliyah. Director Suriya.
Here.
Director Ins.
Here.
Director Jordane. Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Pauli is here, Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Rep. Geber Meskell.
Hi, here.
Thank you. Our first and primary item tonight is an update on the implementation of the comprehensive district design. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, Board Directors, Student Representative Geber Meskell, staff, and those of who are joining us this evening. Well, much of our attention in the past meetings have rightly focused on efforts to return to in-person learning. I want to let you and the public know, to be aware that we've been diligently working to ensure the actualization of our comprehensive district plan adopted last spring, and it's ready to be fully launched for the school year 21-22. Our central office staff, school staff, district-wide from multiple disciplines have been working and leading this work around curriculum transformation, redesigning our school choice process, building up magnet programming, as well as rethinking our community schools, and much more. So tonight, Senior Officer Moore will touch on a few critical aspects related to the comprehensive district design information. First, he's going to share what our enrollment looks like after the first lottery under our redesigned choice system. Then he will share progress towards benchmarks, and then spend a little bit of time discussing what is really the foundation of our comprehensive district design, and that is equity, and how we plan to ensure we're living out that value in our work moving forward. Of course, that relies on focused, quality professional development, so we'll also add that to tonight's discussion. And as you can see, we've got a lot to get through, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Moore to begin the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Sorry, I was in between getting a new cup of coffee. We're going to be doing quite a bit tonight, and so quite a bit to cover. So we'll start with, obviously, a conversation of registration and take a look at what's happening with our enrollment that Superintendent mentioned in magnets, which I will report and share with you. I think it looks, the numbers look positive. It looks like we're on track regarding enrollment targets, some of the economic diversity that we want to see in our magnets, so I'll have a chance to talk about that. Also, deeper, having a deeper conversation about targets around the conference of district design. So without question, accountability is critical, and so we have to be able to both monitor process, but I think we want to start presenting some harder targets, not only for you as our board, to make sure that the conference of district design, as envisioned, is working, but also I think that's important for our public to see. Because I think the more transparent we are, the more we identify targets on a regular basis, and identify the extent to which we're meeting those targets, the more confidence and trust that we will see throughout our community. And we do have a conversation in April regarding the climate framework, and so trust and communication and relationships are critical elements. So to me, that's what accountability is, is being able to make declarations, be able to share the extent to which those declarations are happening. And then when things aren't working, be very humble and honest, and provide an explanation and an alternative path to getting where we want to go. So we'll have a chance to talk about that. And then also, we'll have a chance to talk about equity, particularly our equity professional development. And I believe that's the adaptive work that is going to ensure that our CDD works. The equity professional development, I mean, there's a critical set of knowledge that I think all of our adults in our system need to have, and we've had conversations across multiple divisions, which I'll share. But there's just a set of competencies that all of us need to have in order to be able to serve our students and our families. And so we'll have a chance to talk about core knowledge that we need as professionals in this district to address inequities. We'll also have a chance to talk about expected actions and the different places in which we can embed equity to ensure that we're meeting our outcomes. So we have quite a bit tonight, and I'll try to certainly take my time. We have two hours, so I think we, but please ask questions as you have them. I think, Ryan, I think you're driving tonight, so. So our conference of district design is a bold effort, and we're trying to reimagine how our urban school district delivers on the process of promises of equity access and academic excellence. Throughout the United States, urban education is not serving adequately students of color. It's not serving adequately students who speak multiple languages. It's not adequately serving students who qualify for free and used lunch. And so we have to do better, and I think the CDD, the comprehensive district design, is an attempt to really dismantle institutions of racial inequality. So it's moving beyond individual treatment, which is important. I mean, we want to treat each other well, but it's also gaining at some of the institutional policies and practices that provide the foundation for white supremacy and racial inequalities. So no matter where you live in this district, regardless of zip code, you should expect to be treated with dignity and respect. You should expect to have access to high-quality programming. It is a shift away from investing in transportation and operations pieces to investing in high-quality programming in every school. And those are the targets that we'll have a chance to look at. You see below, this is for the public, there is accountability. You'll be able to follow through a Gantt chart and other metrics, progress on the conference of district design. So first, let's start with our enrollment presentation and follow-up questions. One of the things that we're seeing with our kindergarten enrollment as we're coming back to school, we are seeing more students enroll back to Minneapolis. So as this slide mentions, we have 163 students this spring that are requesting to go to kindergarten in the fall that weren't placed this year. Okay, so these are students who never started, they're not currently enrolled, they're going to be older kindergarten students. And so you see the, you know, 52 kindergarten, those students are now going to be going directly to grade one. And so it does lend itself to some of the challenges that we will face as a school system. And we'll have a chance, in other presentations, I believe, to talk about the challenge of learning loss. But from an enrollment perspective, we will expect to see more families come back to Minneapolis Public Schools as the pandemic continues to progress, more people are able to get vaccinations, both nationally and in state and within our city. As COVID rates are, go down, and families feel more comfortable bringing their children back to school, we're going to see new families in our district. And so right now, we have about 163 students as of last week that will be new students from Minneapolis Public Schools at that early, at that younger grade level. The results of the first lottery, there's a lot to be proud about, and there's certainly a lot of work to do. And I, you know, and looking at these numbers, they're very nuanced, but I'll share this, like 40% of out-of-area requests receive their first choice school. So as part of the conference of district design, we are seeing a large number of families who, as you would expect, they want to stay in their former school. And so we were able to grant 40% of those families were able to receive their first choice school. Now, the purpose of the conference district design, one of the fundamental tenets of that is strong community schools. And so if we were to allow every family to return back to their former school, we certainly wouldn't be able to meet some of our goals regarding strong community schools, as well as integrated magnets, as well as integrated community schools. But 87% of families received their first or second choice. When we looked at the district average of first-choice placements, we had about 12 schools, so 40%, that were below the 40%. And then there were, as a result, the other 23 were above that 40%. When you look at those that are below the district average, so those 12 schools that are, where you have large numbers of families that weren't able to get back to their original school, they tend to be wealthier populations and less diverse populations. Okay, so those families who are below the district average, below the 40%, able to receive their first choice school. Thirty, the population was 35% free and used lunch, and 42% students of color. Those that were above, so those families were able to get into their first choice school, and these are schools that have space, 60% free and used lunch and 67% students of color. So essentially, what you're seeing is in certain areas of the city, primarily Southwest, you do see more families that are wanting to remain in their former school. And so that is something that is a challenge, and I think there's some concerns. Families want to, you know, are struggling with that change, and I think if you are formerly in a school you're comfortable with, and you do feel uncomfortable with the boundary change. But based on the data, the population that is able to get into their first choice less are going to be primarily upper-income, middle-income, and non-white. One of the things that we want to take a look at when we're looking at the success of our magnets, is we want to look at current population, and so as you recall, many of our magnets were placed in racially identifiable schools, other schools that are 20% or above the student of color district percentage. At the time when we started the CDD, those were schools that are basically 86% or above students of color, 80% above free and used lunch. So what we're looking for, if we're looking for the current population, which is your school percentage free and used lunch, we want to look at who's applying, and we want our, because of the schools that are primarily higher in free and used lunch, we want our requests to be less than the current free and used lunch population. So that gives you some evidence that you are having, the applicants are going to be more diverse in the school population economically. And again, the goal was, we're trying to reduce concentrations of poverty. The goal was also to have magnet schools that were 60% free and used lunch, 40% non, because we're wanting our magnets to look to represent the district average. We also had a value, many of our magnets that were formerly community schools that became magnets, we offer what we call transitions. We wanted to allow those families who were currently at that school that became a magnet the option to stay. Okay, so there's a couple of things I look at. I look at the choice percentage. I can also say, we don't have that tonight, but I'll certainly send that to you. Took a look at our kindergarten numbers as well. Our kindergarten numbers are running around 60% non-free and used lunch, 40%, 6% free and used lunch, 40% non. So we're meeting our targets for our kindergarten enrollments of our magnets. But you're also seeing that across the district, you're seeing some really nice requests based upon free and used lunch, non-free and used lunch. I'll give you an example. Take a look at Green. Green is currently 88% free and used lunch. They would be identified as a racially identifiable school right now. First-choice request, the request, actually, 64% of those requests are non-free and used lunch. So you're seeing that inverse relationship. That means that that school is becoming more economically diverse. You see a same phenomenon. Let's take another one. Emerson, currently 63% free and used lunch. You're getting roughly 40% that are applying at free and used lunch. So you're, so again, you're seeing the economic diversity, and even, you know, you look at Pattoon. Pattoon is a North Minneapolis school. You're actually seeing a more diverse population applying to Pattoon. You see the same at Hall. But some of these schools, you know, this is where we rely on the second lottery. This is where we rely on the second lottery, where you have some families that are not going to be able to get their first or second choice. They may not want to attend their community school, and so they still have the opportunity to apply to a magnet. And so we do expect these requests to the far right to go up, to go up. But again, I'm looking at school current free and used lunch, 75% are requests, right? The families that are getting in are actually going to be more economically diverse in the schools, which shows me that we're economically integrating through our magnet choice. And I expect these numbers to grow as we get to the second lottery. The second lottery is currently taking place now. It closes April 12th, and so then we will be able to notify those families April 19th regarding the second lottery. Okay, next slide. We also, also had a question regarding ninth-grade placement trends. And again, with the conference of district design, what we're looking to do is have tighter attendance areas for our high schools. Currently, we have a very wide disparity between student populations. We have one high school, for example, that has roughly 350 students. We have another high school that has roughly 2,000. And you, and we have these conversations about how you determine high school quality. Oftentimes, you determine high school quality based on the number of offerings. Well, the number of offerings oftentimes based upon your enrollment. So what we're doing is we're moving to a process in which we're equalizing the number of students, the populations at the various high schools through tighter boundaries, so that we're able to offer high-quality programming regardless of zip code. And so you see a couple of trends that are happening, which are predictive of what we want to see with the conference of district design. The biggest contrast, for example, is Southwest High School, spring of 2020, at 581 students. Ninth graders in the spring, 365. So that's a significant decline. Where are those students going? Well, you see some increases. North High at 138 ninth graders, they're projected to have 251 spring of 2021. Okay, so many of those North High School students previously would have been attending Southwest High. You also see Edison growing a bit in their ninth-grade population. Ferris had a number of students, ninth graders increased. Henry's constant, it's relatively the same. Roosevelt had an increase in their ninth grade. Washroom slightly smaller. But what I would expect to see, if you project that over four years, you start getting an idea of what the building capacities are going to be in the high schools and what you can expect to see in the next four years. It's less variation in the type of offerings that you're able to have based on your zip code. Okay, so this was a request to say, well, how does our ninth grade look? And so you're starting to see enrollment equalize a bit across the district at the high school level. And so I'm going to just ask a question. Should I go through the entire presentation, Superintendent, Chair Ellison, or should I take questions at the end of each section?
You can go through the whole presentation. Board members, if you're going to write down your questions as they come up, then hold them till the end.
Right.
Thank you.
So we're going to shift to target. So we looked at enrollment, which is something that we pay attention to, to see the extent to which essentially our student placement policies are working, the extent to which people are wanting to apply to the various magnets. There's also some information within the enrollment conversation about how well our economic and racial diversity is working. But this, what we're going to cover at this point are key performance indicators for the entire conference of district design. And so we have four categories: academics, equity, sustainability, and we added the climate framework, because climate is going to be critical for all the work we do. For the next slide. So I'm not going to read line by line, but I do want to, this is part of the transparency. What we're trying to do is we're trying to take a look at the relationship between a CDD conference of district design goal, a key performance indicator, so what's the evidence that those things are happening, that goal is being met? There's a set of actions, we call them activities, that we're attempting to do, and we're aligning that activities with the extent to which that KPI, key performance indicator, is expected to change. If we're able to change that KPI, then the goal will be met. And then you have a baseline. So there's a baseline of information that we begin, that's your beginning point, and then you set targets, you're expecting to have the change up to an optimal point. I will share with the first bullet, which is extremely interesting. One of the tenant things that we discussed with the conference of district design, as we talked about a well-rounded education for every student in part of the city, we talked about investments, for example, with the activities in instrumental music. The baseline, actually, we did calculate that, we had roughly 50% of our buildings that did not have access to fifth-grade music in the district. 50%. So that is a, from the purpose of a zip code, well-rounded education, that is an example of where your zip code and/or the school you attended provide you access to instrumental music in fifth grade, 50%. Under the conference of district design, we anticipate that 100% of students will have access to fifth-grade music. And so that represents an investment. All right, that activity is the instrumental music, which is the investment, and then our baseline would have been, would be the 50%, and then what we're expecting to see actually is 100% of schools will have access to instrumental music. You know, there's other pieces we talked about. You can go to every student graduates academic, social, emotional, technical skills. You're going to hear a presentation, I believe, in May around, for example, the district literacy plan. So we want to see improved achievement in literacy and math. We're expecting to see graduation rates continue to increase. Those are indications that every student will graduate with the academic, social, emotional, technical skills. There's a number of activities. We're going to continue to focus on our literacy, math, multi-tier system of support. You've heard the superintendent mention that often. We want to not only do the literacy and math, the content pieces, but we're going to hear a bit more tonight about how we do that, while also making sure that work is culturally sustaining, and that the curriculum we're using is transformed in a way that meets the needs of all of our populations. You're also going to expect to see, you know, work we're doing around quarterly review of school improvement plans. And so we're going to, actually, every school will have a literacy plan and a climate plan that'll be part of our school improvement process. But if we do these activities, I mean, this is the, this is kind of some of the bread and butter of our, of our work. We're expecting to see, you see the wide achievement gaps, right? So students of color, 22% mathematics, 27% in reading, of students that are great, are achieving proficient at grade level, demonstrating proficiency at grade level. You see the large gaps, white students, 75% in mathematics, 78% reading are identified at grade level academically. So you should see those, not only acceleration, all groups are moving up, but you're also seeing that gaps between our white students and our students of color, those proficiency differences should decrease. You'll see the same with our graduation rates. There's a difference between our white student, four-year graduation rate and our student of color, so 69%. So you're seeing improvement in overall graduation rates, and they're also expected to see decreases between the two groups. And so that baseline will set a target. We'll continue to have conversations about the extent to which we're expecting that to change. But from a KPI standpoint, the gap should get smaller, and you should see increases in proficiency rates in math and literacy. And then you see the last one also, the next one. You see a world language. You're expecting to see, again, there's a gap in participation in advanced courses between our white students, students of color. You're seeing dual-language program enrollment, so we're expecting to see increases in those areas. And so then you see activities, the CTE Center, the more work we're doing, more work we're doing on world language access, the more work on advanced academics. And so hopefully, what you're seeing is a clear relationship between the goal, right? What we're articulating that we want to have happen, how do we know it's happening? Activities, what we're going to do. The baseline gives you the number, the extent to which that number is changing in a desired fashion. So that's, that's how this is expected to work. Next slide, equity. One of the, one of the things that we will clearly expect to see is that we're expecting to see less racially identifiable schools and less economically isolated schools. So less schools that are 86% or more students of color, and less schools that are 80% or more free and used lunch. We value, we have a value of integration. We also have a value of both racial and economic integration. So what do we do? So we made some adjustments on boundaries, but we're also going to have stronger community schools. And so we made investments in things such as K2 literacy, fifth-grade music, I mentioned that. Our middle schools are all going to have focus on international bachelor rate at our middle school level, so that's part of our middle school framework. We also investments in the capital plan. But what we expect to see, we're going to see less racially identifiable schools and less schools that are 80% or more free and used lunch. I will share with you that I think that both of those will be, will be significantly changed for the fall. We're seeing less racially identifiable schools, and we will see less schools that are 80% or more free and used lunch. The enrollment trends, initial data is supporting that, and I'm looking forward to giving you an update as we complete our second lottery process at the end of April. We also have a goal regarding the equity of high-quality community schools every part of the city. And so, you know, there's some, there's some really exciting key performance indicators here. I mean, obviously, you're looking at reduction of achievement and engagement disparities, but we're also looking at having more equitable student access to high-quality teachers. We're looking at having more higher retention rates for our teachers of color, so we're expecting to see increases in our teachers of color across all, all buildings. We're also wanting to see more proportional participation on site councils. I mean, the, you know, the idea of a site council, the power of a site council, this is where our parents are involved in schools, site councils, you discuss budget, you discuss academics, you discuss engagement. And so if we're able to get our site councils to look like the students in the schools, then we're able to have some very different conversations about, and more partnerships about academic achievement, engagement, reduction of disparities, et cetera. So what do we have for activities? So we have things you've heard, as such as predictable staffing, trying to reduce the disparities across the district regardless of zip code, efforts on teacher of color recruitment, just some exciting work around teacher pathways. We have programming, for example, at South High School in Henry, in which we're trying to get more teachers of color students that want to become teachers of color. Align with that is that our students of color need to have a positive experience in our current schools, that want to become part of the educational institution. We will have teacher equity plan. There's equity professional development. We have affinity groups for our staff of color currently operating now to support retention. And what do we see if we're successful? What we're going to see, changes in proficiency rates, graduation rates. We're going to see equal access to high-quality teachers. We're going to see retention rates for our teachers of color become stronger, higher, and then we're also going to be able to see proportional representation in site councils, and so you'll have access to data there as well. We're also wanting, as part of the comprehensive district design, we talked about centralizing our magnet programming. If you recall, prior to our comprehensive district design, many of our magnets were actually surrounding the district. They were on the borders of the district, and so we centralized those magnets. We did a couple of things. I mean, provided more access. In some regards, they were also put in buildings that were a bit larger, so you're going to have more opportunities for students to participate in magnets. And so, and I think the initial data is showing that we are becoming more successful in having integrated magnets, both by race and economics. So we shifted the placement, as I mentioned. We also changed our student placement policy in that of our magnets, our goal will be those that are going to be integrated magnets, 60% free and used lunch, 40% non. And there's an interesting baseline in that we want our percentage in our magnets to be plus or minus the district average of 10%, right? So the, you know, the goal is for those magnets to be 60% non, 40%, but we're giving ourselves plus or minus 10% either way, given the transition work that we're doing, but also just some of the economic and racial diversity throughout the city. And again, these are citywide magnets, but what's unpredictable is the consumer taste for integration. It's very interesting, and I, not to get too far down the road, but, you know, I've been surprised in some cases, there was a example, a very large desire for K8s throughout the city. And in some cases, if you look at Sullivan, you're seeing a really nice economic integration for Sullivan. We're not seeing the same at Jefferson. If you look at the Jefferson numbers, you actually see more students who qualify for free and used lunch applying to Jefferson, you're seeing more too. And I think, you know, we honor choice, but I'm a bit surprised that we're not seeing more economic diversity and our racial diversity, given the desire um, diversity and our racial diversity, given the desire for, um, for equity. And, and that being a global studies humanities, I'm surprised a bit, but perhaps we'll see something different on the second lottery. Uh, but, but those are the, it's a plus or minus ten percent. You can't anticipate the extent to which, um, um, people move with their feet, um, uh, based upon, uh, uh, what they're articulating their desires to be. Um, goal, student placement policies process, um, you know, our activities, we're, we're implementing the EDI. We're implementing student placement, uh, improvements, and so we're looking at our requests. Uh, and I will say, as we look at the request data, I think at, you know, a reminder, so this is, this will be year one of the comprehensive district design. And, and we have a lot of metrics and a lot of things that we're expecting to happen. From my experience, um, change is not linear. That is, that we can't expect that, that change to, to happen immediately and in a straight line. Um, uh, there are a variety of contextual issues. We are in the middle of a, of a pandemic. Um, and so, uh, when I look at our numbers, I also look in the context of that. Um, and I feel positive in the sense that, um, we are, um, moving along the trends that we expect in a positive direction. Um, and it just shows that, that there is a desire, um, uh, to, to, to implement of the values of the conference of district design. Next slide. Sustainability. Uh, these are really focused in, in many regards on some of the operation aspects of the district. Uh, but again, that is one of the goals, sustainability. Uh, and so the first is budget, uh, key performance indicator, if we're doing alignment, we're, we're utilizing our resources, um, wisely and appropriately. Um, uh, we, you know, you've had, uh, conversations in finance committee, for example, of the investments, the reallocations, in some cases from transportation, two areas of the classroom, both in magnets and, and our schools. Uh, but we're looking for a fund balance, uh, within board policy, between eight and thirteen percent. Um, you're seeing the baseline right now will be eight point one percent. Um, so our baseline is actually within, um, board policy, and, and that's, uh, as a result of a lot of hard work, uh, from the finance team as well as other senior leaders and collaborating. Um, and as an indication, activities, this alignment of strategic goals and the budget, um, and, and engaging with, with a more robust department planning process. Um, it does create a system where you have less inefficiencies, uh, in spending resources. And again, the goal is to take every dollar we have, those precious resources, and then, and then use that to leverage better experience for our students and families. Uh, also, as we're successfully implementing predictable staffing, um, you know, and we're doing things such as, say, you know, AP allocations and, um, continuing to review our staffing adjustment process, um, principal support for predictable staffing support and our principals. Uh, we should see that, um, a hundred percent of our buildings are, are meeting the, the predictable staffing requirements. Uh, we're also wanting to see, uh, through the conference of district design, the correction of uneven enrollment patterns. And so, uh, we're doing a couple of things. I mean, there's two ways to look at it. I mean, we're looking at, um, increasing our enrollment. Um, and if you, and, and that's actually over a period of time, we're reducing the decline in enrollment. So we've been declining enrollment each year. So you're reducing the rate of decline up to, I believe, twenty-three, twenty-four, where we no longer have a decline enrollment. You get to twenty-four, twenty-five, and you're starting to see that we're gaining enrollment. And that was part of the finance, uh, pro forma. Uh, so you're, so we're expecting to see a decrease in decline enrollment, um, and then eventually into gains in enrollment. As we increase our market share, we have stronger community schools, um, we're doing more community outreach, we're having more strong, we're having stronger climates, uh, then those families within that community will come back to our district, both in the community and also as we have innovative magnets, we'll also attract families to those magnets. Now, we'll, we'll see a reduction in schools below three hundred. Uh, we're expecting currently, we have, uh, ten schools below three hundred students. And so we're expecting, as we increase our market share, uh, as, as we invest more and, and have stronger community schools, more outreach in communities, uh, we do expect to have less schools that are below three hundred. Um, and we're also, as mentioned, the enrollment decline, um, will, will decrease. Um, and so eventually we'll start seeing increases in enrollment as part of the theory of action of the CDD. We're also, uh, we know that, um, there's value in, in, in taking a look, um, at the skills that we have, providing professional development, um, and other supports, uh, to improve staff recruitment and retention that has to do with climate, that has to do with equity. Um, our Equity Diversity Impact Assessment identified a series of microaggressions that may have our teachers of color and staff of color face on a rather basis. And so that professional development, um, supports people's understanding, reflection, um, knowledge, uh, so that we don't repeat those, those inappropriate behaviors. Um, and so when people feel more comfortable, uh, when people feel more valued and respected, you will see increased levels of staff retention, um, both stu, staff of color, but also just in general, um, staff by job category. Um, increased level of employee satisfaction, we're expected to see, uh, more employee satisfaction as we have greater levels of alignment, as people feel more respected and valued. Um, so what are the activities? So we have, um, um, our teacher equity plan. Uh, that's, uh, uh, a work with some fifteen schools that have, uh, the highest free and use lunch populations, um, at those locations, really focusing on targeted recruitment, uh, getting teachers that have, um, the mindset that want to work, um, in schools that have high populations of free and use lunch. I mean, every, um, um, staff should want and desire and have the skills to do that. Um, but we want to make sure that if we're, if we have teachers, um, that are in our schools, the highest population of free and use lunch, that they're passionate and they're ready to do that work, um, so that we can hold our students to highest expectations and get the levels of engagement and achievement that we need and that our families deserve. Uh, we can continue to look at our SASSL, which is our principal evaluation tool. We'll also look at our teacher evaluation tools, making sure that equity is embedded in those areas, and we'll continue to do the equity professional development. Um, and so the baseline is, we're gonna take a look at staff retention by job category, uh, setting the baseline in the fall. Uh, culturally relevant program, customer service, uh, as families feel more valued and respected. If you recall, part of the CDD, we discussed that eighty percent of our families that left the district were families of color. And those families said that they wanted more academic rigor, they wanted to feel valued and respected, and they want to feel safe. And so this is the work we're doing around the climate framework. And so, um, activities, climate framework, but also we're gonna do more intensive work communicating with our families. Our parent evaluation work is example of that, uh, where we have our parents identify what success looks like, what is feeling valued look like. Um, and as we listen to our families and as we, um, capitalize on our community knowledge and wisdom and respect our, the voices of our students, we'll see increased market share. So you see a market share baseline, um, as mentioned, our market share, which is the proportion of families in a, in a given area, um, that we, that we have, fifty-seven percent families of color, right? Eighty percent of our white families. Um, so you see that, you see a market share gap. There's very interest. You see a market share, um, gap between our white families and our, and our families of color. Um, that's aligned, um, to that statement that families of color are leaving the district because they don't feel valued and respected. So this is direct work that the CDD is, is attempting to address. Um, as you're looking at academic pathways, the third area, um, you see the work around improving quality of transportation services, reduction of transportation costs. Again, a sustainability piece, you're seeing this theme of staff retention, employee satisfaction, improved market share, increased retention rate, right? Now improved quality of services, reduction of transportation cost. This is our bell time work, bell time planning implementation, transportation and walk zone implementation. And so you see that we currently spend about eight point two million dollars to baseline for regular education expenditures. Um, you're expecting that number, um, to hold and or decline, um, controlling for increased costs, right? Of fuel and, and things such as that. Um, but we're wanting to keep our, our expenditures in transportation. Um, um, we want to keep that from increasing substantially, and I, um, Senior Officer DeBak can speak more on that. But, uh, we will monitor the, the dollars that we spend on, on transportation. And again, part of the CDD, uh, the conference of district design was reallocating from transportation costs, shifting millions into the classroom, the same with our magnets, you're seeing the same thing, shifting millions of dollars in transportation to actually invest in high-quality programming. And, and so that's the, that's the intent, the promise, the foundation of the comprehensive district design, is being student-focused, um, and making sure our families are getting what they need regardless of zip code. Climate framework. So there are, uh, I mean, you'll have a chance, uh, we'll go more in depth in April to discuss our climate framework. Uh, but our goals are real simple. I mean, I mean, every family in this district should feel safe and welcome. Um, that, that is a, uh, that should be a given. That's part of our culture, is people are respected, valued, feel safe, um, regardless of, of background, uh, and, and experience. Um, we expect to see that our school climate, right, improvements, uh, the work we do, every school have a school climate plan, and we will expect student retention experiences to be improved. Uh, the goals are having culturally relevant customer service, and we have excellence in all aspects of organizations, um, at the leadership department and district level. We are in, we're developing, I'm kind of excited about this, um, we're developing, we're gonna call it a climate index. Um, and so we're currently, uh, we had our parent evaluators, uh, present, uh, last week. They're actually been collecting data on what does it look like, sound like, feel like, um, from their perspective of a, of a positive climate. Um, and so, uh, we will be creating that climate index based on the voices of our parents and students. Um, we will, I'm also looking at things such as sati, satisfaction, staff, student satisfaction. We'll look at, uh, things such as staff, student retention, um, and we'll have a climate index, uh, which will be essentially a five-point scale as of now, uh, where we will have an expectation that all buildings will be three or above on this climate index. Um, we'll also take a look at the percentage of schools and departments that are making positive changes on our climate goals. So what are we doing around this? Well, we're gonna have our four values, development of our belief statements, being very clear on our values. Uh, we're having ongoing community engagement sessions. Every school has a climate plan and an action plan. Um, we'll have professional development, both departments and in schools. Uh, we'll continue to use our parent evaluation work, our youth evaluation work to support, uh, the work of climate. We're gonna continue to center the voices of our parents and our students so that we listen to the people that we serve as professionals and make sure that how our families and students are defining success is how we define success. And, and so that's gonna be very organic, and I'm really excited about, about the ability to do that work. Okay, next slide. Anne, I'm gonna take a sip of coffee and, and, and close it out with Equity PD, and I'll take questions. All right. So I was, um, I've been very technical, and, um, I think that, that the work around Equity PD, um, we're gonna present a framework tonight. And I want to, um, introduce just a powerful colleague of mine, um, Candace Logan. Candace, are you available? I just want people to have a chance to meet you. Hey, Candace.
Hello.
So Candace Logan, um, uh, and I have been at, uh, um, the Equity work, uh, we've had the, uh, recently combined this STL, social, emotional learning, positive engagement teams, the Equity teams. Uh, we've been doing that for about two years. We're gonna go on year three next year. Candace has been, um, in her role about three and a half years. Uh, much of the work around Equity has been developing that infrastructure. If you recall, like, prior to, three years ago, we actually, uh, didn't have an Equity department. So part of this work was, was rebuilding the Equity department. Candace has shown this tremendous leadership in that area. Um, and now we're ready to go in and, and, and meet our promise that over the next three years, I like to say three to five years, but Candace says, let's do it in three. So over the next three years, every staff in this district will have meaningful professional development around Equity. And it's not gonna be at one time, but we, but the professional development of getting the information, right? So there's new learnings. We give people the ability to, to, to apply it and be coached and supported, right? And then we look at the outcome, and we talk about the extent to which that knowledge is being applied, and then we adjust. And Candace is a, reminds me often, um, that while we have the best laid plans, this is very organic work. And it's very contextual work, and we see with the recent events, um, with our, um, Asian brothers and sisters, in particular in this community, most recently, and also the murder of, of George Floyd, that Equity work needs to be sustainable, but it also needs to address moments in time. And, and that's where the organic nature comes in, um, whereas both headwork and heartwork, um, as we do this work. Um, so we're gonna have a plan, and we're gonna be investing in the plan. And what I'm really fired up about with the Conference of District Design, that's very rare, I wanna just, it was Minneapolis, is it's very rare to see a school district invest over a five-year period of time in Equity. Because this isn't professional development now that we're having to go out and, and try to get grants. The district has made a commitment that every staff person will get the requisite professional development needed to serve our students and families. Okay, so I wanted you to introduce Candace. Candace is gonna be leading much of the work. And, um, um, as we give an update on the content, Candace, this will be Candace's work, along with partnering with the Office of Blackmail Achievement, our Office of Indian Education, our multilingual departments, um, this is a broad, this is a, a, a really broad coalition. Um, as we're developing Equity standards, we're all at the table together developing this. And so it's taken a bit of time, but it was very important for us to have everyone in the organization, those units, those departments that are doing the important work around Equity, coming together, us being on the same page and us being aligned. So let me walk through what we're thinking a little bit. All right. So I'm gonna slow down, and, uh, this has to do with, um, being valued and seen and heard. This is a piece by Virginia Sotera, and, um, she, Virginia, I mean, is actually, what I, what I'm fascinated is she started looking at, at some of these authors. Um, her work is, her foundational work is in therapy, and she uses poetry, the, 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 the youth that she interacts with. She actually is part of her therapy as she engages, and then she writes about what they're feeling and saying. And, and so her gift to all of us is as she's talking to students and, and engaging, um, with some of the challenges that youth face, um, she puts it on paper and allows us to learn from that. So, um, I'll just share, I'll, I'll read this to you, uh, which is, "The greatest gift I can conceive of having from anyone is to be seen by them, to be heard by them, to be understood, and touched by them. The greatest gift I can give is to see, hear, understand, and to touch another person." And so when this is done, I feel contact has been made. There's a lot in this piece that has to do with the extent to which this community feels valued. And I think a lot of the, the challenges that we're witnessing is our lack of understanding of each other, the lack of willingness to change how we've always done things. Okay, so, so there is a, this work is both, um, rewarding, exhilarating, um, and challenging because it, it causes us to, uh, go outside our comfort zone and engage with each other. And so I just really appreciate Candace has done some phenomenal work already, uh, with our principals and, and throughout the district. And so she's here to answer questions. Um, be sure to give Candace the tough questions. Um, and so she's here to, to support that. Let's go to the next slide, though. So Ryan, I'm gonna ask if you can, uh, play the video, because this is extremely important. This is a, is a video we've used, uh, before.
I'm a science teacher at Northeast Middle School, Minneapolis Public Schools. I'm also a YPE facilitator. This year, I have been privileged and blessed to work with extraordinary young adults who created a phenomenal community with me and taught me what that looks like. And they're gonna share their truths with you. Thank you.
Some schools just not for me. We are the mastery and the masterpiece. We have the power and authority to be what we want to be, see what we want to see, as long as I'm able to breathe out, have the power up my sleeve. Sometimes we just want to be able to leave, to satisfy our anger and greed. We want respect. It's what we need. We want to work with the opposite gender, creating projects that we will remember, creativity flowing throughout the winter. This is what we ask. You can't be that sinister. We live in a world where adults control everything. It feels like they're our enemy. We're sitting back letting them do anything while we have all this strength and power. Now the time is ours to grow flowers, work on what we want for hours. Hopefully no one will be that sour to stop us from creating what's ours. It's amazing the creativity we can show if we just let it flow, show what we know, allow us to grow.
New teachers need to understand that if we don't understand something, that they need to explain more and go into very detail so that we understand. You need to understand that your students don't like when you guys have attitudes or just want to send them off for no reason.
Some students feel like they're invisible, and everybody wants to, you know, be seen and be heard. So make sure you, like, notice everyone. If you don't make a relationship with your students...
If you don't make a relationship with your students, you may think they're just rude or disrespectful, but maybe things are going on in their life that you don't know about because you never had that bond.
Try to do like interactive stuff.
I would say like to be like enthusiastic and like be engaged with the students.
Don't assume something off, based off of somebody's skin color.
The students love when you actually care for them and actually you want them to succeed in life.
Don't assume. Try to build relationships with your students.
Make sure you get to know all your students and like pay attention to most of them.
Have a lot of patience with the students.
Show respect if you want respect.
And ask them more questions about themselves, like get to know them.
Try to be lenient with students.
Have as much equality in your classroom that you can.
I feel like they put the white students above everybody else and make them do higher challenges. I think the black students are just dumb and don't consider anything. Like they don't have hard work, they don't want to graduate and all that.
I am the Negro. Say, who are you that mumbles in the dark? I am the young Negro woman whose words remark, I am the Negro. Opportunity is real, but life ain't free. Yet I am the young Negro woman who walks among me. I am Negro. I've been through a lot, I've stumbled and failed, but my people told me, you're stronger than nails. I am the Negro. I'm still affected by the history, doesn't mean I act so immaturely. I am the Negro. I'm mixed with other things, but the Negro inside represents me. I am the Negro, she whispers.
You can do anything you put your mind to and you may be young, but you still have a voice in life. And people should respect you from the start. Even if they don't know you or they don't know your background, they should still want to hear what you're saying.
If I would give any advice, I would say, ask, ask, ask the children. They know what they need, they know what they want, whether the lesson goes well or not, whether they understand it or not, whether you understand them or not. If I don't understand something a student says, I ask more about it. They love it because then they feel like they're being heard and they matter. They have so much power in them. It's not about us teachers controlling a class. It's about us creating a space for our children's excitement and love of learning to flourish. Where they feel safe and trusted and validated. Be that teacher that they trust. And you will get more and learn more than you can ever teach them.
Senior Officer Moore, we can't hear you.
I've been muted. So I'm going to, I'm going to deviate a bit. One of my colleagues, Candace Logan, she's in the, has been texting up a storm and it gets me very excited. Candace, do you have a few things to say about that video that, that you'd like to share with the board? Like, because I, I think what you're writing to me is just very profound.
Well, I was thinking back to the poem by, by Virginia Satira about making contact. And when I watched the video before, I started noting some of the things that students were saying. And so I noted that they said this need to be seen, the need to be heard. They want to be in classrooms where it's interactive. They want teachers who are curious, who are open, who show care, who build relationships. Students want to be known, they're looking for equality, they want to be challenged. They have a sense of agency. So often we as adults can use the term, use words like we want to empower students, which at its root says that we're withholding something from them. Where if we look at it from creating the conditions for students to feel empowered, they already have the power, the sense of agency. They just need to know that they've got opportunities to act upon it. So those are the things that I heard and because I'm a, a big fan of her work, I thought this is students telling us that they are, they want educators that can cultivate their genius, that see them for the full human beings that they are. And that's a lot of what our parents are saying in the parent participatory evaluation, is they want schools that reflect their children, teachers that reflect their children and that they see themselves in the curriculum and the environment and are treated similar, exactly what the students were saying.
So Candace, Zag, you're it. So, so you're going to be pulled in. You are officially a part of this presentation. So, but I, I want to, I mean, I mean, I, I think that that is the work. So we're talking about frameworks and structure. And then also though, there's just going to be a lot of hard work and engagement. And I, and I really feel, we all do, like if we would take the time to listen to our students and our families, we're, we're going to be successful. And I think that's what a lot of this work, if you talk about Equity professional development, is there is a commitment with our parents that they're going to help us through their voices and our students. We're going to design this professional development together until there's some really exciting things. For example, where we're expanding our parent evaluation work to 15 schools. And so those will be site-based parent evaluation in which families are going to be collecting information about what a positive climate looks like. They'll share that information with staff. And, and then we're going to co-create some professional development and, and, and support our, train ourselves, support, learn together about how we better serve our, our students and our families. So that's just an example of some of that work and that's a partnership with, with Human Resources that, that we are fortunate to do. But is that, making sure that's not my soundtrack. All right. So let me ground this though, going back to our policy 1304, which is our Equity University policy. And I, and I've said this numerous times, I mean, there's a lot of power in this policy. What I, what I want to highlight and I'll continue to highlight is that this policy really talks about identifying, correcting practices and policies that perpetuate the achievement gap and institutional racism in all of its forms. So there's very few policies across the United States that calls out institutional racism. And we did that a decade ago. Now, our challenge as a district oftentimes is implementation and I'll acknowledge that. And in some regards, we focused on, sometimes we've been a culture of innovation and we always try to do new things. And I would argue that with the CDD and with the Equity work as part of the Conference of District Design, that innovation will be the implementation. That is, if we consistently do the plan, do the hard work with both the head and our hearts and engage with each other and listen to each other, then we're going to get the outcomes that we're desiring. But we've got to be consistent, we've got to be steadfast, we've got to be determined and, and we'll get, we'll, we'll be able to accomplish our goals. If you look at the next piece though, adult behaviors must be concentrated on elimination of gaps. And, and so this policy identifies adult behaviors. It compels the adults in the system, right? To directly address those things, those inequities. It directly calls for the adults to dismantle systems of white supremacy and address those racial inequalities that we see on a regular basis. Go to the next slide. We have definitions. I want to go to the second paragraph. Institutional racism means our collective failure. Because we're moving away from that deficit language of saying, students. And, and, and let me recognize the, the problematic nature of some of the language regarding the achievement gap. But it is, it's an adult implementation gap in that sense that it's our collective failure as adults to not give students what they need when they need it. Right? We own collectively the outcomes that we see. And so we are compelled morally and ethically to gain, get the knowledge and the skills, right? And engage with each other to be able to address the disparities that we see. Because we've created those, our system and through our individual actions. So we're looking at moving beyond individual prejudice to addressing systemic biases. And then the policy calls out professional development, opportunities for staff to improve his cultural competencies, to do culturally responsive instructional practices, curriculum assessments, so that we are better able to meet our students and family needs. So it's in policy and I, and I wanted to bring that up tonight because this is you as a school board and previous school board members that are compelling the adults in the system to do the right type of work. And, and so this plan is, is a step towards that. When we look at, at the context we're in though, one of the things that we're pushing back, Candace, is, is a culture. And Minneapolis Public Schools has a series of experiences, knowledge, right? Ways of knowing and doing, our values, our beliefs, how we see the work, how we engage with each other. And there's history and culture. So when we talk about how are people experience Minneapolis now? Well, that's a direct result of what we've done or not done years past. And then we talk about the concept of white supremacist culture, that is that the ways of knowing and doing, we make an assumption that everyone agrees with the ways that we know and do. And that the work that we do, the work that we do is actually the right work that, that, that in direction we should be going. And that one of the challenges is that we've not had people of color in all facets of the organization. We have not had people of color defining success. We haven't had people of color helping to create plans and the work. And so this is actually, and as we're deconstructing white supremacy is acknowledging that we do need to have people at the table and to create the plans, to help develop the metrics, to deconstruct the way of knowing and doing and calling those things out, the way we see the world. And the cultural racism, shifting power away, so not using power to reinforce the dominant ideologies and dominant approaches that we've always done. Because that impacts our climate, right? So the extent to which people are feeling that they're part of a culture that doesn't value and see them based upon their experiences in skin color and/or language and/or background, that impacts how we engage with each other and in a climate, right? And so you have to address white supremacy, cultural dominance, right? You have to share power in order to have a climate in which all people are valued and seen and heard. And so that's part of the work that we're trying to do with this professional development. And I'll go into that a bit more. Next slide. So let's talk about the framework. So this is just an example of some of the work that we've currently done. And I, and I, you know, I would argue it's really good work. The video that you saw, for example, that was a collaboration with the Human Resource Department. They showed that, the new teacher orientation, that was a Northeast Middle School Youth Evaluation Group led by that period of time, Isafah Kerger, who's a teacher at Northeast. HR was able to show that video during a new teacher orientation and it, and it's powerful, right? But I would say one of the challenges that we have, and we all acknowledge this, is that good professional development isn't, isn't a one and done. You don't provide professional development and then expect people to have one conversation and implement. Particularly around interrupting a lot of biases and, and things, unconscious things and conscious things that we do. But here's some examples, I mean, we've done some work around the Howlwood of Equity, Restorative Justice Practices, 210 staff. There's also been leading the face, we've done some work about detours and, and dangerous intersections with instructional leadership teams. And the numbers are next to that. One of the, you know, a, a senior officer, Fearing, Dr. Fearing has talked about, you know, we've collaborated the Equity Department as well as her unit in academics and blackmail achievement, multilingual Indian Ed, on the front lines of justice series. We've had 500 staff, this is very promising actually, go through intensive professional development on curriculum transformation, I think we shared that before. And they've received roughly, they're going to receive roughly 40 hours of professional development. I want to argue that's the model. Maybe, you know, if we're going to do this work well, we need to do intensive, ongoing professional development. That group actually meets once a month. And, and, and that's the type of model where you're learning, you're applying, you're coming back, back in community, you're learning again. And we're holding each other collectively accountable. That work will now extend into the work of transforming the curriculum. So first you have to learn about yourself and who you are and what you do or not do. And then you need to apply the work. So that, so the goal angle of that is working with the academic division is doing some curriculum transformation using, in this sense, Goldie Muhammad's model, which we'll share, which is part of our foundational framework moving forward. Office of Blackmail Achievement's done really good work. You know, we've done the, the curriculum transformation where we've actually done a, a full day with 3,000 teachers, principals, ongoing site. But hopefully, which is like, like, we have not necessarily aligned all the work. With the exception of the, of the Front Lines of Justice Series, our professional development has not been ongoing, sustainable. It, it's not been part of our core value of a district in terms of offering consistent professional development offering. Go to the next slide. And in fact, I want to use an analogy and, and I'm not this creative, so I'll just admit that. I would never create something like this on my own. So, so thank you. This came from the, the Human Resource, Emily Olson actually developed this in conjunction with a team consisting of, I can't remember everyone's name, Candace, Nelo. I think Michael Walker's a part of that group, Keenan, who's in HR. But here's an analogy, Jen Rose, here's an analogy of a structure. And so what we're trying to do is we have a structure and thinking about blueprint. So we're going to talk about concepts called the Equity Competencies and our Climate Framework. So that's the blueprint, like the map of how you do it, the wood framing. We're going to have transform curriculum and belief statements. And then I'm going to share with you at HR, so a, a framework for curriculum that Senior Officer Fearing will go more in depth, as she talks about literacy, but school improvement plan. So we have a structure, think about the individual apartments as the contextual location, schools, departments. The furnishings, every, every house needs some furniture, I believe. And so we're going to have standards and content, but then we have Equity, SCL, literacy, MTSS throughout. What I would argue in the past is I don't know if we even had a defined structure. We've had really good people, really strong departments, doing important work. If you go to the next slide, what we're attempting to do is do more alignment across academics, human resources and accountability research and equity around the Equity Competencies, around the work of curriculum transformation, around SEL, social emotional learning, restorative practices and climate. That's the work that we should do. So that's the core work, we share that work across divisions. One of the challenges that, as we're going to discuss the Climate Framework next month, and restorative practices, and our culture, there's a set within the Climate Framework of what those things look like. And I'll show you the next slide, what it looks like in staffing, what it looks like in the classroom, in the community, in our buildings. Go back to the previous slide. That, there's a series of things that we expect to see. There's a series of things regarding curriculum transformation that we're asking our teachers to do. Okay? So something such as questioning power isn't something that's intuitive, right? Like there's some learning that needs to take place in how do you as a professional? Some do, but not all of our teachers, not all of us, you know, are able to question power. None of us have the skills to restore narratives, I mean, that's a very technical term. So you use a framework, Dr. Goldie Muhammad's pursuits, identity development, skills development, intellectual development, criticality. In fact, those four bullets are what we want our students to have. We want our students to have a sense of identity, strong skills, intellectual, intellectual development, be very critical of the world in which they're in so they can change the inequities and, and things that aren't fair. So we're going to use to do that through the development of Equity Competencies, things such as every staff person in the district should understand one's own lens, who you are and bias that you have. So these aren't, these aren't, when I, when I, as I'm identifying these competencies, these aren't things that are good to have. These are things that you have to have to be able to effectively educate and engage our communities, with our community members. Understanding race, racism, whiteness, power and privilege. Intersectionality is, is a term where, where intersections, for example, of race, of gender, of sexual orientation, detours and resistance. So how do you, how do you remain agents? How do we, if you're trying to engage and dismantle institutional racism, there's always going to be power involved. So you're always going to do detours and resistance. I mean, one of the things I learned as an African American man early on is that as a leader, if I wanted to get something done, I always have three to four. Is that as a leader, if I wanted to get something done, I always have three to four. Approaches. To address every issue because my existence has been one of constantly encountering. Detours and resistance to very rational things that I say. But one of the things that we know is that racism is extremely irrational in many regards. And so. There is this expectation that when we're doing. Type of work of dismantling systems that aren't just. You have to expect detours and you have to expect some resistance. And then self-study is reflection. So you're doing internal reflection. I don't want to under account the accountability structures at the end. That this work also is going to have a layer of accountability. So as you're defining expectations, we also have to have some accountability structures and ways to monitor the work. So that. You know, if things aren't working the way we expect. That we do have a way to, to self-correct. And frankly, as we become a district where we have an expectation of these competencies taking place. What happens if people don't want to do these things? What happens if? People don't want to understand their own lens and bias. And so those are the conversations that we're having. As a senior leadership team as well as at, at the principal level. So just quickly, I mean, we'll talk about this in April, but the climate framework. Right? We're expecting to have some look forwards in the classroom, in our staffing, in our family engagement, in our buildings. Go to the next slide. We're also expecting with this. Historically responsible literacy framework. You can hear more about this. In, in May. But you see these definitions of pursuit of identity, right? It's understanding of self. The pursuit of skills. You need to have the strong content knowledge. I really like this framework. The pursuit of criticality. We want our students and as professionals. We have to have the ability to read, write and think in ways that understand power, privilege, social justice and oppression. Right? We want our students to have the capacity as they're engaging in conversations. To, to call questions, to ask critical questions. And if they're learning something. That doesn't align with their own experiences, their own sense of justice, we want to provide our students the support. To be able to question that. So that we all grow. The pursuit of intellect. I really, this idea of being curious and. We call it, talk about cultivating geniuses. You know, you cultivate genius by. Having critical conversations and, and. And, and providing a space for students to challenge. So as they better understand, engage each other, they're actually growing intellectually. So this pursuit of intellect. We value our students as scholars. So it's a really nice. Framework. That will align with our culture and climate framework. You're going to start seeing the same language. Around anti-racism, sharing power. Valuing authentic voice and engagement. We're going to do this in our culture. We're going to do this in the way, the how and what we teach. And then we're going to measure this. We're going to have an accountability system to support it. Next slide. We're going to have a set of competencies. And here's an example that you can expect to see in June. Why do you have competencies? I mean, again, it lays the groundwork for the work that you do. And so. Here you see the core competencies and then you're going to have attributes and this is going to allow us, for example. To align with things such as our teacher evaluation system, our principal evaluation system. Right? So this is currently under revision. We have a group of different department leaders. Putting this together. We're also going to use the language of our parent evaluators, the work they've done, the learnings. To help develop the attributes. And so we'll share with this, we'll have this ready to go in June. But this will give us the core document. So if you go to the next slide, we can start developing. Some scope and sequences. And so one of the critiques against equity professional development. Is that you don't necessarily know define what you're learning. We want to make sure that. As people are getting this professional development, you're actually, it's, it's, it's growing. If you want to go back. And learn about a particular competency, you'll be able to see the competency you're learning. You'll also be able to see the attributes. The identities, the, the Goldie Muhammad. Skills. And so you'll be able to see. The relationship between the two and you'll know what you're getting. We're very aware, we have professional development structure. We wanted to lay this out. These are all the locations. The groups in which we're going to do work with. And these are the different spaces in which you're able to get professional development. So. Part of developing this equity professional development plan is leveraging those existing structures and aligning that work. So here's an example. You see different departments, the academics. The equity integration, research and evaluation, teacher development. So you'd have. Your executive director of academics, Jen Rose, working with. Candace Logan and Sarah Hunter, working. With Emily Olson and Keenan and Nelo. Who, who's our. Principal Special Assignment for Professional Development. But we have alignment across departments, which allows us to work across audiences. And what you end up getting is equity content. Right? Equity embedded and then transform curriculum. So that's the example of how we're doing this work. But I hope what you're seeing is. Just an, an intentionality and a, and a commitment to move across silos and be more consistent. With our offerings. So here's our timeline for planning the new work. As mentioned, we're going to have these competencies revised and ready to present to you. And our community by June. During the summer, we're going to continue to develop the support structure for equity and climate work. So that has to. You'll hear a bit, a bit more of that in April when we present the climate framework. August, develop the August professional development opportunities. So this is where we're going to launch, for example. Go more in depth on the Goldie Muhammad framework. So this is some of the academic PD. Dr. Fear can talk about. But we want to have a scope and sequence for our pro pay courses across development offerings. There's also going to be a labor management committee to revise the standards for effective instruction. Right? So what you're seeing as these equity competencies in this equity work. Now being embedded in the institutional. Practices and approaches that we have. So this isn't, it's going to be. Learning, new learnings. We're expecting application. But then there will also be a way to see the extent to which these things are happening or not. Embedded in our existing system. So our main system is our. Standard for effective instruction. For our teachers, we have our SASSL. For our principals. We also are collaborating. So this work is also part of our department. On evaluations as well, as central office. So just a quick check in, and they were almost done. Talked to, I've talked a long time tonight. So we do have plenty of time for questions. Just check in. So one of the, one of the things that. And I'm not this creative, so I appreciate. My colleagues. I would never do this. I can't stretch. There's no way I could use, I put my body in any of these angles. But just do a check in. One of the, you know, as we do center whiteness and we're dismantling and we're taking, taking a look at institutionalizing. Concepts of equity and institutionalizing dismantling. Of oppressive systems. It does elicit some emotional and physical reactions. You know, I want to comment like sometimes. Even as individuals, as we have this social justice lens and approach. And commitment to our students and families. Right? There's always in our own experiences in the back of our mind. Some kind of power system structure. That gets in the way of us doing this work. So just kind of check in. See what you're feeling. And we're going to take sixty seconds. Just as board members, just a silent reflection and others that are seeing this. You know, what are you feeling? Where are you feeling it? In terms of the information you're hearing tonight? And then what do you think is causing that feeling? So I'm just going to take thirty seconds and have you do some reflection. On, on what you've heard to this point. And before I get into the accountability structures. Okay. Let's go to the next slide and talk accountability. So what, what, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable? To doing this work? Because I, I think there's a. There is a risk and I, you know, we've had conversations as a senior leadership team. About the fact that as we're engaging our community. And our students. We want to make sure that this isn't. The same conversation that, that happens where you have a fast start, or you say you're doing the work. You're asking people to engage and participate in the process. But there's not follow through. And, and so we don't want to. We want to make sure this is sustainable work, that is viable work. So we have within the PowerPoint, there's a professional development evaluation. Template. There'll be a professional development evaluation plan. Both at the end of each professional development session, but also overall in terms of our professional development approach. We have our school improvement plans and so we also monitor that. The public has access to that. I mean. And, and we monitor that at the, our associate superintendents, take a look at those school improvement plans. As we expand our site councils, those are, those are critical documents that our parents. Will become familiar with. The extent to which. Our approaches in academics and climate are happening in that, in that plan. So we'll support our families and reviewing those plans. We, I mentioned briefly the staff evaluation systems. Again, holding ourselves accountable to doing the right type of work, the actual work. We're going to have different ways of measuring. So we're going to have climate measures. The learning pursuits that I talked about, the identity, the criticality. One of the things our community has pushed us on, and I would say and board members. Is looking at different ways to measure student success outside of standardized test course. So we will have climate measures. We're going to have ways of taking a look at those. And it's challenging to develop that, but we can do it. Those learning pursuits. And then we're also going to look at. Things such as the equity competencies and measuring the extent to which those things take place. Or they exist. And so there's different ways that we can measure that and we'll present that. In fact, our climate index should be ready by June. And so we're going to start giving you alternate ways. Of measuring success because we want our students to not only be proficient. And content. But we also, as a Minneapolis Public School community. We want our students to be agents of change. And be really good human beings. Right? That, that are able to relate to each other. In very authentic ways. We want the adults to do the same thing in our system. And then you're used to us doing school board presentations. So we're going to come back. We're going to make claims. We're going to have goals. We're going to have KPIs as mentioned. And then the hope is you're pushing us on the extent to which we're doing what we said. And, and so then we're committing to each other. And so here's an example of program evaluation. But essentially you're looking at. Knowledge, application, outcomes. I mean, that's just the, the most basic way. When you're measuring whether or not something's working or not. Next slide. So what we'll take to implement. Hopefully tonight, and it's a tension, but it moving away from skills only focus. To seeing skills as one of the four pursuits and we'll explain that a bit more. Professional development that builds capacity of our educators. So we want to. Focus on courting efforts between training, coaching, feedback and evaluation. So this cycle. Of, of, of providing the information. Coaching people and application. Right? Getting feedback to see the extent in which that's working. Evaluating our efforts. Right? And so we'll continue to do that, that feedback loop. And then persistence. I mean, I think this is a tension. Which is we have this sense of urgency. Okay? But this work is going to take time. So we're going to have to present metrics and have conversations. Both at the board level and with our members of our community. Who have waited a long time. For the type of change that we're wanting to see. But we also want to have a system that's sustainable and consistent. Because long after. All of us are no longer in Minneapolis, we want this value of equity and the system to support it. To be part of who we are and the way that, that Minneapolis is seen. Both locally here and experienced by our families and students. And also have that sense of pride throughout the state that, that. People clearly know Minneapolis is a place and what family their values seen and heard, and there's a system to support that. So what we're asking for you as the board. Is that we do expect that there's going to be some resistance. And so first of all, I appreciate you for. Your ongoing support and, and for the commitment to equity. As part of the comprehensive district design. And so. You know, please listen with an open ear. For resistance and detours. It's, it's really easy. To get off track and I, I think people are constantly asking questions and information. And so in some regards, that's a form of resistance and a detour. Where we get so. Tied into answering questions that we don't let a process take place. And so just be ready for resistance and detours and. And know that our beliefs will be challenged and some of the things that we're going to discuss will be challenged. You know, such as, I'll give an example. Even the video, I had a colleague. Nelo. Who, who talked about the fact that we have to get beyond racial binaries. Right? And so like one of the things that I didn't mention, but I'll mention now. Cause of my own belief being challenged. Is that that video didn't have the wide diversity of students throughout the district. It's an excellent video. But we didn't see our Asian students on video. We didn't see our Latino students on video or Native American students. So that's even within. People who care deeply about the work. Right? We still need to challenge each other. And I share our beliefs. We challenge to be ready for that. And then I, like, I don't think we should ever shy away from being accountable. So as board members. Representing the community, your constituents, please hold us accountable. For doing the right type of work. And, and hold us accountable in ways that allow us to continue to be courageous. And, and dismantle. White supremacy and the systems that you're identifying institutional racist systems and policy thirteen oh four. Again, that's a blueprint that the board has laid out for us as professionals within this organization. And so now it's time to implement that. And so one, one piece of that is the professional development. Second piece we'll discuss in April is the climate framework and expectations around climate. So with that. We have time for questions. And so I'm going to turn it back over to you, Chair Ellison, and I covered a ton tonight. Three very diverse topics that are all interrelated. Candace, I'm going to look towards you to answer a lot of questions. Amount of coffee. And superintendent Graff, I'll, I'll turn it over to you as well. But at this point. Turn it over to superintendent Graff if you have any comments you'd like to make and. Then Chair Ellison, I think will probably begin a, a large number of questions on a diverse set of topics.
Thank, thank you, Senior Officer Moore. Just want to acknowledge the work that you've done to help support this presentation this evening as well as. Working as a, a member of the senior leadership team around the comprehensive district design. I know it's not. Everyone's a. Desire to, to present such a lengthy presentation tonight, but you did a great job with that and I want to acknowledge that and appreciate all the support that. Has been provided, both with the, the presentation here tonight, but over the last couple of months with our comprehensive district design. And acknowledge your team to research equity and accountability. They're all interrelated and so that's why I think you, you see so much of the. The. Cross conversations that are taking place with our academics, with our accountability, with our equity departments. So I will again just reinforce to the board. You know, we started this conversation five years ago when I came into the district. Looking at how we were doing things, how we needed to do things differently. With an equity lens, a focus on outcomes for our students. And certainly with the comprehensive district design, we've taken. You know, taken that directive or taken that request and are putting forward. What we believe is going to create conditions for success for all of our students. No matter what your zip code, your race, ethnicity, gender, background. And so we're. Very appreciative of the opportunity to do this work and happy to answer questions that. Directors might have this evening. So I'll turn it to you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you. And thank you for this update. This is a lot of information. So. Board members, I'm going to ask you, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Or. If you're at the Davis Center, let Director Anison know you'd like to speak. And I'll start with you, Director Anison. Anybody, any hands up?
Not yet. Chair Ellison, so. We'll come back here in a second if you don't mind checking in with the others.
Okay, Director Ins. You're still muted.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Officer Moore. For that lengthy presentation and I appreciate the last slide there with the. Quote from Foucault, where there's power, there's resistance. And of course we know, I. You know, Foucault believed that power was pervasive, right? So resistance is pervasive and it's everywhere. And we see resistance, I think, in a lot of different ways to the CDD. And I just want to ask you a question about. How, how we should deal with some of that resistance. So. You know, looking at the, looking at the numbers and I apologize for being sort of pedantic or. But I studied a lot of Foucault when I was in college, so it kind of gets me. Excited to see. me excited to see quotes from Foucault. Anyway, I think that, you know, we start, when we started a couple of years ago with the CDD, one of the key things that we looked at was the fact that our schools were way more segregated than our neighborhoods in our cities. And so we looked at the school choice system, and we said that, you know, the school choice system, as we were supporting it in MPS, was contributing to that segregation and was contributing to a concentration of privilege as a result of that. So we undertook the work of sort of dismantling that system, which was creating more disparities in our city and more segregation in our schools. But, you know, we can't force people to go where we want them to go. And we can't create, we can't create that perfect percentage that we're talking about. I think you talked about in the two magnet schools, right? If you were looking for 60% free and reduced lunch in each magnet school, right? So that it could match sort of the overall demographics of the district, right? But we can't do that because people are going to, to some extent, they're going to choose, make choices about where they want to send their kids and where, and kids are going to make those choices about where they want to go to school. So we're going to see, I think, and we are seeing a little bit of disappointment in some of our schools and maybe like some of our magnets not being enrolled to the extent that we would maybe like in an ideal scenario. So when we get back those numbers and we see things not going exactly the way we want them to go, right? Although there are areas certainly where we're very happy and things are going good, what should be our response? How should we deal with those things? We don't want to undo everything, right? But how do we support those ideal situations in a way that still fits within that framework of equity and still fits in with our larger understanding of dismantling systems of white supremacy? So as board members, I think that's probably the biggest question for us, right? Because we're going to get resistance and we're going to see things not go the way we want. So you talked about staying the course and being persistent, but still we do have to respond when things don't go the way we hoped and predicted as well. So, you know, what do you think, Chief Moore and Senior Officer Moore?
So, so this is a massive, this is my, I mean, this is a massive system change that we're undertaking with the comprehensive district design. You know, I think you're, you know, I appreciate the difficult questions that you're asking, and I welcome those types of questions from community members. But I also think this takes a bit of patience in the sense that, for example, we made a conscious decision to allow families to stay in their locations in their schools because that was a value that we had. And so one of the things I took a look at, for example, our kindergarten numbers. So we're looking at trends. Our schools, as a result of this work, becoming more economically integrated. You can take a look at that number at the end of the year, and you're saying, okay, we're still going to have some racially identifiable schools. But hopefully we engage in conversations of what does a trend or process look like that looks like we're on the right path? I think also, though, from a very humble way, as we're engaging with our communities and learning, we also have to have the ability, and we hope that you grant us the grace, board members, if we've made a mistake and we're looking at something that needs to be corrected or changed or an assumption isn't working the way we thought, that we have the ability to engage in a conversation about course correcting because that may be the case. Right now, I feel very optimistic when I look at the direction that things are heading, when I look at key metrics. But I think that the detours and resistance, I mean, sometimes there will be contextual issues that are going to get in the way. No one's ever happy with this level of massive change. What I've noticed is people have figured out how to get the best that they can within an unjust system. And so in many cases, there are going to be pockets of success. But when I mentioned earlier, the fact that 50% of families, this is a really clear example for me, 50% of families didn't have access to fifth grade music. I mean, that's really, that's unconscionable to me in the sense that we had a system based on the zip code that did not allow access to music. Or depending on where you live, you didn't have access to language. And so we, we're going to have a better system, but it's also going to take us a bit of time to, one, impact the climate in which this work is happening. So it's just having the patience to stay the course, ask the critical questions, but allow the program, the system, the process to work. And so I think that's, I try to be patient, but also it's engagement, it's continuing to, even though people aren't happy with some things that are happening, we never run away from those conversations. Those are all members of our Minneapolis families, so we continue to engage and we're going to move forward together. So I think patience is the big thing, Director Ins, is what I would say to resistance, asking critical questions. But, but allowing us to identify, give us the ability to identify when the direction is moving, what are promising signs. And I, again, year ones can be very interesting because we're doing this work in the context of a pandemic. So the fact that so many things are trending in a positive direction really gives me a sense of hope. And the reality is, is this is very difficult work. This is extremely difficult work because we're trying to dismantle systems of white supremacy while we're also doing a lot of grieving, both personally and for our community with the murder of George Floyd and with the recent Asian-American violence and the ongoing discrimination against our Latino families based on language. And so there's just a number of things, the ongoing racism, trauma with our Native American families. So we have to do healing, but we also have to do system change, and so we just need patience for that. It's a very comprehensive plan. We're looking at changing systems, institutions, but also climate, the way people are experiencing their way of life and experience in Minneapolis Public Schools. That's going to be some very deep work. And Candace and team are going to have some really difficult conversations with people that are going to make people very uncomfortable. Some of this data that we're going to see is going to be very uncomfortable. I was very surprised, I'll share with you, I was very surprised that we didn't get the amount of economic diversity I expected at Jefferson, given that location in the Southwest community. There's something there that we need to engage in, in terms of what our values are around equity. I'm encouraged with what I'm seeing at Hall and Bethune in Franklin, but we're still not, there's very real fear of people going to North Minneapolis, right? And that has to do with the relationship between race and perceptions of crime that we have to unpack. And so those are the conversations, we talk about detours and resistance, that it's going to take us time to unpack that. And we'll get there, but we need a little bit of time to unpack those conversations with our community in the context of Minneapolis being one of the most segregated cities in the United States of America. And so we also need the help of the city of having affordable housing throughout this city. Like, we can't fix everything, to your point, Director Ins. We can't integrate on our own the city of Minneapolis. We can provide some amazing opportunities for people to work and learn and love each other in a classroom throughout our community. But we're going to, this is a major historical issue that we're also going to need the help of the city to address. So that's a pretty long answer, but this is very deep work, very committed to doing it. We have an amazing senior leadership team, commitment of the superintendent, but we're going to have to get our hands dirty and have some really honest conversations about the data that we see. And then we need some time to be able to unpack those conversations.
Thank you, thank you, Senior Officer Moore. I guess what I take away from that is, I guess my question was sort of more about enrollment numbers. And I appreciate that your response was not about only enrollment numbers and that really what I take away from it is that it requires us to not react maybe to just those specific enrollment numbers, but look at the larger picture as well. And we're going to have to be persistent to address those issues that maybe the enrollment numbers are a reflection of.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Suriel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senior Officer Moore, thank you for this incredible presentation. It's very inspiring. So thank you to everyone that actually made this possible. And I wanted to kind of piggyback off what Director Ins had mentioned. And can you just clarify and expand a little bit more when it comes to Jefferson? Because at the end of the day, you know, when we are going through all these changes to address inequities, it's going to take a community to come together so that we can ensure that our children have access to inequitable education and resources and opportunities. Just to clarify and further expand on that, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can all look at the numbers. I think I expect to see a bit more economic integration, given the location of the school. I think it's an incredible program, given the focus on global studies, humanities, social justice, the desire, the value, articulated value of this community to focus on equity. Expecting to see a more diverse population choosing that value of equity at that magnet school. So there may be some reasons why we're going to unpack that, but that's an example where I actually expect to see a bit more economic integration at that location. I think the other challenge that we're going to have is we have a pathway, you know, and we have a new pathway from the Kenwood community to the Anwone community to North High. And that's a very different pathway. That's going to involve, again, some very important conversations we need to have across different communities and the extent to which people are comfortable with not only the program offerings, but the communities in which we're asking people to travel. And that may not yield a lot of early success. I think we'll get there. I always, I think from my experience, the more you engage with each other and you develop relationships, we'll get families to, and we do have families. I'm seeing it already with some of the enrollment in Bethune and Hall. And, you know, we have families from all over the district that are choosing integration and the values of equity. But there's some difficult conversations in that pathway that are going to be had. So that's another example. You know, there's going to, Jefferson's another one. It's a K8. And so we, if you recall during the conference of district design conversations, many of us engaged in conversations about K8s. And so seeing some very good things at Sullivan in terms of, but that's an area we're going to go deeper in and engage with our, particularly our Southwest community about, you know, how we make Jefferson a viable option because, and the reality is that, look at the Magnus, Anderson, Jefferson, Sullivan, you know, Bethune, Hall. If you take a look at their academic growth and literacy, their academic growth of those locations are phenomenal in terms of the improvement of, so you can't say that the academics are failing. The proficiency is low, but if you look at the growth academically in those locations, those are really good schools, with really good teachers. And, and so we're going to have to have those conversations with our community across racial and economic lines so that we make our articulated value of equity and equality match our actions.
Thank you, sir. And yes, to follow up as well with equity, and I'm happy to see here that you're integrating the side councils and to ensure that we have an equitable representation and participation of our parents. And help me to better understand, like, how is that going to look like? I mean, is there going to be like some sort of, like, who's going to come and ensure, you know, that that is the case? I mean, help me to better understand and also to keep in consideration, you know, like, perhaps what are the opportunities to ensure that our parents understand, you know, what it takes to serve in one of these, you know, side councils?
We've been having some really important conversations internally about why families of color aren't participating in some cases on site councils. We know that our families care, but they don't necessarily see the institution, the systems that we have established as necessarily being those systems that are going to drive change and/or we wrestle with the perception that our schools and our institutions in some cases will actually listen to feedback. So we will be, we've done some really deep work led by Executive Director Selena Martina, working more closely with our family liaisons. And so we're going to work to them. We've invested additional resources in interpretation, translations. We don't want language to get in the way of understanding opportunities. We're doing deep work on examining bylaws. We have a site council policy, so we'll be doing some deep study on that site council policy to see the extent to which our schools are hearing to that. We will monitor that information. We will see more work, engagement with the site council with, and, but also not just the site council as a space of power, but also asking the site council to do more outreach with families through the hiring process. So like, one of the things that I, that I don't think people are aware of is that we have a really strong site council. That is a place that you're talking about budget, you're talking about academics, but you're also developing your family engagement strategies. So your families are helping you reach other families. And so we've learned a lot through our parent participatory evaluation that sometimes families, right? If you get the families and we develop the relationship, they actually have more credibility in some cases to reach out to people they know and say, let's come back and assist them, let's work together on that. So we'll be leveraging our families to help reach out to other families, be part of those site councils. But it's going to be a lot of outreach, family liaisons. We're going to make sure we have things in multiple languages. We're going to use our parent, in some cases, our parent evaluators to do some door knocking. We're going to put our values out there. We're going to be very clear that we are a district that's anti-racist, that believes in authentic engagement, shared power and decision-making. We're going to put those values, they're going to be visible. And so through that, we're going to create spaces that welcome feedback from parents. So it'll be very deliberate, and I, what I'd like to do at another presentation is give you that more detailed plan of that. But that is some deep work we're doing around site council. I feel like I'm shortchanging it, Director Suriel, because there's a lot of important conversations and people involved. The associate superintendents are having conversations, the family engagement communications department, the equity unit, HR is involved in those conversations. You're going to see more engagement, do operations with some of the work that we're doing. You know, as we're designing capital improvements on magnets, you're going to see more opportunities for families to help in the feedback process of design. So it's going to be exciting. You're going to see, this is what I get excited about, because I'm from the South. I like, I don't know if it's just even legal, Detective Officer, or Senior Officer Duvette, but, you know, our parks, I, you know, seeing more gatherings once the pandemic subsides, being able to go out in our parks and be in relation with each other is critical. Or people are seeing school district people interacting with families, and so you're getting back to this concept of a strong community school. And so when people feel ownership of that school location, they will engage. And, and so this is why we went to a strong community school model, where there is an expectation that if you are a school and you, and that is your school community, there is an expectation as you know your neighbors, you know people who are living around your school. And if they're not attending your school, we're engaging and finding out why. And you can have a lot of great conversations when you're having a school gathering in a park and somebody goes to another location outside of the district stops by for a conversation, and people are saying good things about the school. So we're going to do a lot of grassroots pieces in terms of engaging our families and learn a ton from our parent evaluators and our families and just do a lot of listening. How do we get more families engaged? We're learning a lot. But we'll present the more comprehensive plan. I'd love to pull in Executive Director Martina and we have, present those formal plans to you as a board. But that's a critical component of the climate framework.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm done with the questions and comments.
Thank you, Director Suriel. Director Arnison, the board hands up on the floor.
Thank you, Director Caprini. Thank you, Vice Chair Arnison and Chair Ellison. Director Suriel, thank you for asking the questions about site council. That was one of the things that I wanted to ask about in regards to how site councils will support schools in terms of recruiting families. And Senior Officer Moore, I also appreciate your answer in regards to the parent participatory evaluators. I have a request, and I realize that it's probably already been, maybe been put out there to senior leadership, but I want to know specifically what schools are doing, what principals are planning, what's their recruitment? But I wanna know specifically what schools are doing, what principals are planning, what's their recruitment plan? And it's really important to me that our school leaders, our school communities and parents understand that they have just as much of responsibility to recruit families for their schools. We cannot do it all by ourselves. And I'm not suggesting that we can't do better as a district. I think that we have done better than we have in the past. But I really wanna hit at home that it's important to me personally that I see what their recruitment plan is. And I re, and I'm not asking for twenty, you know what? I would like a little soundbite for 2021, okay? But then I would like to have a solid year planned for twenty-two, yeah, that's the next year, 2022. That's just really important to me, that we have to come together and recognize that this work, we have to do it together. And the last thing I wanna say is, I don't think we've made a wrong decision and I won't, I'd be the first person to say we made a mistake if we if we truly did. The district is doing exactly what it needs to do in order to reach the children that have not been reached for over 20 years. If this fails, it's because the community turned their backs on what's possible for our city. And I do agree with you that the city of Minneapolis has a responsibility to take some of the weight off of our backs with transportation. There are areas in our city that are not nearly as diverse as they possibly could be. And when I speak of that and I hear people say things like, well, you know, public housing and the federal government, I'm not talking about public housing. I'm talking about housing, opportunities for people to live in areas that they have not been able to afford to live in before. So I'm just gonna stop there, but I would appreciate a recruitment plan from our our school leaders. Thank you.
Yeah, this is gonna be, Chair Ellison, Superintendent, members of the board, this is gonna be a lot of fun. So I, so I, you know, you know, you, it's it's exciting to me to engage in the community and and us work together and build something amazing. And and so what you will see is is not only site council work, but but every school as they're developing their climate plans, there is strong work that's gonna happen with the site council in that local community. You're gonna see transition conversations and and reach outs with to our families. One of the things we've learned during the pandemic and our parents have reinforced that, parents really appreciate a phone call, a personal reach out. And that's a lot of work, but it makes a huge difference. And so we've seen in some cases where those schools have done that hard work. You see the dividends in terms of attendance and and participation in the schools even during a pandemic. So there's gonna be some very exciting detailed work in terms of climate plans, in terms of site councils having a more defined role. Talk to Executive Director Martina about a training plan. So, you know, the site councils, we wanna be able to provide professional development for our parents so that they know clearly what the expectations are of being a site council member, because that's an extremely important job that helps us do our work better. So so that's some, but but that's what we're talking about is really operationalizing the work of equity, of really trying to be innovative through implementation so to meet our promise to our families. Because we've all been, many of us have been in this room year after year looking at the same outcomes. And so I I'm really proud that through the Conference of District Design, that we're going beyond programs and actually doing more systems change and dismantling the system that that has led to a lot of outcomes and disparate outcomes based upon race and zip code. And and so I'm right with you, we will have those those plans and and this is gonna be fun work. This is gonna, I mean, this is, it's a lot of fun watching people engage and feel valued and and conversations. And I mean, that's kinda how I was raised. I like to, you know, go to the park and we'll have a chance to to communicate and talk and get excited about supporting our students, right? And 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 that's a really important value that we're gonna be able to see in this community. Very exciting.
Okay, Chair Ellison, if it's okay, I think I'm going to just make a comment. And was there anyone else over here? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Alameen first.
I do, thank you, Vice Chair and Senior Officer Moore and your team for all the information. It's a bundle of information that we've received. But I guess a couple of questions that I have, one being within my district, I know we are, we're doing a massive change, as you have stated. And so we have to be very patient with each other and we know that there's going to be a lot of success and there's gonna be some trials and tribulations along the way. But as we talk about the fact that we are giving parents an opportunity for them to choose their home schools, I think we have to be very clear that we are doing that, but parents also have to provide their own transportation in some aspect of that. And so a lot of what I'm hearing is that, you know, again, we wanna make sure that we are clear as we're trying to rebuild this trust. Because that's the last thing we want is for us to say, you have your choice of your home school, but we're not telling them that transportation is on you. And and that's a lot of what I'm hearing throughout my district from parents within the community is that, no, they didn't tell us that. And so as we're communicating, as we're having these tough conversations, we just gotta put it all out on the table. And we know that everybody won't receive it in the best way or it may be more challenging, but we have to be very clear as we're trying to rebuild the trust within our community. And then as we're talking about more of the professional development, I'm hoping that we will take the opportunity to dig into our community and utilize a lot of the professionals that we have that have, some have been students of Minneapolis Public Schools and have their own organizations and things going so that we can just, again, be open-minded, bring in individuals that look like us, that looks like, you know, our children, that the children that we are servicing to be the ones to do the actual training as we go through this professional development and we're trying to train our staff. And at some point, we open it up to our parents, because at the same time, we're all learning together. This is new water for all of us as we're trying to get our children back into our Minneapolis schools, as we're trying to strengthen our families. So that I, as a family within Minneapolis Public School, can be comfortable with telling my sister, yeah, your child should go here, you should send your niece or nephew here. We have to build that strength and that trust back up within our school systems and just make sure that we're covering our grounds. This is not easy, but I think it's it's long overdue. It's long overdue and I'm excited about the work that we're stepping into and ready to to help where it's needed, so.
Yeah, Chair Ellison, just acknowledging, Director Alameen, I appreciate that. I appreciate the feedback. And, you know, as we're engaging community members, I mean, again, regardless of where you live in the district, you should have access to a quality school. And I think that we need to do a better job meeting that promise. And I think some families have not had their needs met in their local school. And so they've gone elsewhere. And so now we are asking families to go back to, in some cases, a location in which they didn't feel respect and a value. So we have a responsibility to make sure that the climates in which they're returning to are just as good as the climates that that they found. And so that's a commitment. And 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 I will, and we will own communication in the sense that if things aren't clear, then we'll continue to communicate and make sure they're clear. So that is, that is a commitment that that we will do as a as a team until we are clear and we get the engagement and and people know exactly what's going on.
Chair Ellison, if I could also add just to the point that Director Alameen made about the professional development, I wanna just acknowledge that we we experienced, obviously, a significant amount of need in the murder of George Floyd this past summer and took took some time to work with Executive Director Selena Martina to to identify cultural presence, you know, in professional development that was appropriate for the needs of our community. And I think we saw that as an entry point to exactly what you were describing, you know, making sure it was representative of of the community or representative of the individual students that needed that support. So I think we saw some some great lessons learned through that. And I know the feedback that we received from our principals who participated in it were were positive about it and appreciative, so that's something that we'll continue to explore.
Okay, thank you, Chair Ellison. If I might, I just have a comment as well. As we were having this discussion, I was thinking about a discussion we had back in December of 2019 when we were first talking about the idea of centralized magnets and what we hoped and dreamed for. And we were looking at the demographics of our schools and we were talking about racial isolation and talking about how our system was not set up really for anything different. It was set up for what was happening. And we were talking about the needs of, the need for system change. And a couple of things, I went back and a couple of things that I said at that time, which has come up again tonight, right? Like, what I said at that time is we have to allow ourselves to be uncomfortable if we wanna address our system. And promising someone an escape path from discomfort will mean we are really giving up on comprehensive change. And I think that is still accurate today. And at that point, I also said, when we talked about magnets in moving to a centralized magnet system, which is a, we need to acknowledge is a really big shift, that there was a lot of angst about how far people may need to travel to access particular programs and that the distance would somehow result in people not going to Minneapolis Public Schools. And then what followed was some seemingly rational arguments about why another location would make more sense when we talk about magnets. But it seemed like it always came down to this idea that reasonable access needed to be within a particular geographic parameter for people and that reasonable access could not include Southside residents traveling to any parts of North or Northeast, no matter how slightly over the river it was. And it's hard not to think that that's not related to race and class. So that that's the discussion we had in December 2019. And now here we are today and we're talking about the early indicators for our magnet schools. And I just wanted to acknowledge in, Mr. Moore, you talked about, you talked about the technicalities and spending a long time on the technical aspects. And I appreciated the technical aspects. And my key takeaways from much of the discussion here today is that everything's not perfect, but I think we are, it, what I heard you say is that our early indicators are certainly more positive than not. And the reality is, I did not see any early indicators telling us that we had racially isolated magnet schools. They're perhaps not quite as balanced as we like and we can move things a percentage point or 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 four or five points. But we are, they are less racially isolated than they were. At least we're anticipating that. So I I take that as a as a positive sign. And along Director Caprini's point, I guess I was thinking a little bit more broadly in thinking through, and I don't really need an answer, it's really more of a rhetorical question, I guess. We talked a lot about communication support and two lottery placements and the idea and the importance of that in helping people engage in school choice and the support that would have. And so I'm hoping and I I suspect, really a yes or no question is, no, yes or no answer is totally fine, suspect that we do have, like, we are looking at those numbers. When you mentioned schools that you're looking to change those demographics or really do like some intentional work. And that goes for community schools as well. We didn't get into it, but I know it's our goal to not have schools under 300. I think it is, is the number. So I'm hoping that that part of our support here is looking at this early indicators so that we can be more proactive between now and the second lottery in addressing those issues. Is that a pretty accurate assessment, Superintendent?
Yeah, I think we're, I think two things. One is that this is, you know, we're all aware this is the first year of implementation of the lottery system that we have adopted. And knowing that it's, our second lottery is occurring right now, that that window is pretty short. But I think the point to be made is that we we are mindful of monitoring this. We're also mindful of the statement of, you know, not reacting but responding to what we have. So going back to what our ultimate goal and the values were. And so continuing to to lay that foundation and move that forward. So our commitment is is twofold. One is to make sure we're monitoring what we know right now and then responding to that so that we can prevent it from continuing down the same trajectory if it's not going the way we want it to.
Perfect, and I think that was the intent, right? That was the plan, that was this board's discussion and that certainly was our goal with setting up these metrics. So I really, so I personally appreciate the technical, all the technical details that you brought. Some of those, some of those details, we have to wait. We don't, won't have that, those metrics quite yet. But I I I liked the the different goals that you had set up and the KPIs that you had connected to those goals. I think they are logical and we'll look forward to continue to be discussing those over the upcoming years so that we go. And I do wanna just mention that I am particularly pleased. I'm looking at the ninth grade enrollment and evening out our high school enrollment and thinking that's a very positive sign. Thank you. And that concludes the floor comments, Chair Ellison.
Thank you, Director Arnison. I just, I just wanna say a couple of things. I really, really, really enjoyed the Student Voices segment that we watched. And I like Candace Logan was writing down what they, what they had to say and relationships came up a lot. And I really appreciated that I heard them say patience, they're looking for respect and equality. And so that's what I heard and I really appreciated listening to students talk. So thank you for that. And I look forward to hearing more about equity and our climate framework in upcoming meetings, seeing that we're running out of time tonight. I did have one question, comments, kind of along the same lines as Director Arnison about the second lottery. I know when we, we said we wanted to do a second lottery for families, a lot of what we talked about is because our families of color did not generally participate in high numbers in our first lottery, in our lottery, because we only had one in our lottery. And then they ended up being placed in a school later on in the year. And so I'm wondering if we know if we've done any outreach to our families of color and we know that either they took place, you know, participated in the first lottery or are we following up to make sure that families that did not participate in the first lottery know that they have an opportunity for this upcoming lottery? And I heard someone say that people who didn't get there, who did participate but didn't get the school they wanted to, had another chance. But I'm really concerned about people who did not participate in the first lottery, that they know that they have a chance still. And so, but I do like the numbers, you know, the percentages in our magnet schools towards diversity, both racial and economic. But I still want, but I'm still concerned that we make sure that families that did not participate in the first lottery have, know they have that chance, so.
Chair Ellison, Superintendent, graph directors. I, I mean, that's, that is the point of the second lottery. It's part of the Equity Diversity Impact Assessment, EDIA on on student placement, is that we wanted to have a second lottery for that exact reason. Trying to acknowledge that is is challenging. I mean, it's challenging to to communicate, particularly during a pandemic. So we will be sending out more information regarding the opportunity to attend the magnet. There are seats available at our magnet, so please reach out and you know, we would, we would love to have the problem, you know, in some cases, we do have some pretty massive waitlist. So so just reach out, those building principals would be happy to answer questions. But we do have a second lottery and we're expecting to have even more people apply. I do wanna clarify, the second lottery is for primarily those that are participating in magnets. So the out of area locations, while you can have the opportunity to apply to, you know, your location, again, if you didn't get your first or second choice, that family, there, it's gonna be extremely limited for those families to be able to get into an out of area school. The second lottery, the purpose is for magnets. The opportunity to get into an out of area school would be dependent upon someone who's already been accepted to that out of area school to give up their seat. So so the likelihood of someone being able to use a second lottery to get into the out of area school that they wanted outside of a magnet is extremely slim. So I just wanted to be transparent about that. But but certainly, I mean, people will apply and will continue to keep the waitlist and and but that, there'll be, there's a lot of really good opportunities for our magnets. And, yeah, we're looking forward to having like very integrated, innovative schools moving forward. So excited to see what happens with the second lottery. We had a number of families, quite frankly, that applied to Magnus after the first deadline. So I think that's why I feel somewhat confident in the sense that after the deadline closed, you still have families applying to Magnus. you still have families applying to magnets, and those numbers are continuing to grow. So there is, there is a lot of interest in our magnets, and it's word of mouth. And I, so from my own experience working with magnet schools, I'm really excited about what's happening in the first year, because typically, the way that you generate interest and excitement in magnets, because it tends to be word of mouth, so those families that are attending and they're getting an excellent education, they're getting excited, and then people are seeing students doing performances and wearing amazing t-shirts, lab coats, construction's happening, that word of mouth creates a buzz, and then pretty soon, the conversation we're going to have three years from now, I'll give a prediction, is we're going to be talking about waitlist, and we want to, it'd be great to get to the point of having so, our waitlist being so large for our magnets that we'll have conversations about opening up additional magnets for the sense of integration. So I anticipate a buzz, we're looking good, you know, as you should for a first-year magnet, keeping in mind that the schools are designing programs, construction hasn't started, and so as those things happen, it will, it was going to generate a buzz. We haven't had, in this district, I would argue, fully funded magnets, and I've been here ten, going on 10 years, I'm close to 10 years, so, you know, we're going to see some really exciting things, not only with the investments at our community schools, but the innovation and exciting programs that we're going to see at our magnets are really going to get people excited. So we're where we need to be, we're where we need to be, and I'm very optimistic.
Thank you. Thank you, staff and directors, for that conversation, I think that went really well. We're going to now move to our final item for the Committee of the Whole, for which I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Graff to share some announcements.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. If, with your permission, if I could just reinforce one more point around the lottery there, just to clarify, you know, we've identified income as something that we can do for proxy in our, in diversifying our schools with a lottery, so I want to make sure people are aware we're not using race, that's not permissible or allowable. And so the second lottery that we're running is really designed to achieve income integration in our magnets, so that's something that I just wanted to reinforce as well, that it's really designed to achieve that income integration. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity to present on that, and I wanted to provide just an update around our COVID-19 response planning. I know that we've really been monitoring very carefully and closely the city data in Minneapolis, and I think we've seen a slight uptick in cases. The ranges that we've been identifying over the last several weeks have been from about 14 per 10,000, most recently up to around 16 per 10,000 in cases. So just being mindful of those, those ranges and monitoring that carefully. We're also averaging about six to seven cases a week, and again, I can remind people to go to our webpage, we have a dashboard where we've identified those cases on our dashboard. We're seeing definitely more adults become vaccinated, fully vaccinated, which has reduced the staff needing to quarantine, which is very positive. We do continue to meet with our regional support team and also appreciate the ongoing partnership that we have with the Minneapolis Health Department as they assist us with the contact mapping. And I want to personally thank our school nurses and our Health Services Department staff for their dedication as well to making sure that our families have needed information even in the event that they quarantine. You know, it's often that we receive this information at probably the most inopportune times, you know, on the weekend or in the evening, and so our staff have done an incredible job of trying to provide updates and inform families of situations as quickly as possible. We do remain on track to bring back many of our high school students on April 12th, and our middle school students are returning one week later, and I know that right now we're, our schools are working on scheduling, and all of our secondary buildings will have their final building readiness walkthroughs taking place next week. In addition, I want to remind our students and families that MPS is inviting students in grades six through 12 to participate in our exciting College and Career Week from March 29th through April 1st. All activities and events are virtual and free. We had some great success, if you recall, when we had the transition for our elementary students, and staff were busy planning and preparing, so we had students able to engage in community events, community education events. Well, this time, we're offering College and Career Week from March 29th through April 1st. It's filled with opportunities for our students to explore a range of college and career topics, they can learn more about career interests, there's also an opportunity to identify post-secondary options, so they may consider those professional aspirations. And then we have a number of different events that they can engage in, career interviews in Spanish, Somali, Mung, we have a Junior Achievement Virtual Career Expo in Biztown, My Life Lesson Plans, University of Minnesota, Minneapolis College, and Augsburg University panels, as well as a panel to include myself and our cabinet career panel. So just encourage people to go to our district homepage, and you can find out more details on those schedules. And then I wanted to acknowledge that we recently held a meeting with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and we have our annual compliance notification, and I'm pleased to share that our committee, our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, voted to concur with the educational offerings that we've been extending to our families and our students in Minneapolis Public Schools. And in accordance with the state law, this process has to happen prior to March 1st of each year, and this committee serves it as an advisory role to help ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities, and we know that it's critical to the achievement and success of our American Indian students statewide and offer a valuable opportunity to strengthen district and parent partnerships. So appreciate all the work that our Executive Director, Jennifer Simon, has done in strengthening the collaboration with the committee, it's led to specific investments, you know, in our student programming as well as increased planning across the academic departments, and you heard a little bit of that this evening through Senior Officer Moore's presentation. And so I appreciate also your involvement, Chair Ellison, and meeting with the committee to discuss their perspective and hear their concerns. And so once again, I just want to acknowledge my appreciation and thanks for the committee and its members for all their efforts on behalf of our students in Minneapolis Public Schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Graff, for those updates, and I'm going to echo my thanks and gratitude to the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. It's, it was wonderful meeting with them. And I know our next meeting, we're going to look forward to hearing how the first couple of days of secondary in-person learning have gone at our April Board Meeting. So I have now adjourned the Committee of the Whole and called to order the March 23rd, 2021 Special Business Meeting. Clerk Polly, would you please let the record reflect that members who were present at the just adjourned Committee of the Whole are also present for this Special Business Meeting? We have just one item on the agenda, which is to approve three contracts. Without objection, we'll move right to it. Director Caprini, would you please move approval of the contracts, label on the agenda as Items 2A, 2B, and 2C?
So moved.
I second Ali.
Thank you. Approval of the contracts have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand to be recognized. Director Arneson, any?
No.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Director Arneson.
Yes.
Director Alameen.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suryo.
Yes.
Director Ins.
Yes.
Director Jordane.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Aye.
Director Polly is a yes. Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the contracts are approved. That concludes our business for tonight. Director Arneson, would you please move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second Jordane.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded. Director Polly, will you please call the roll?
Director Arneson.
Yes.
Director Alameen.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suryo.
Yes.
Director Ins.
Yes.
Director Jordane.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Aye.
Director Polly is a yes. Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion is approved, and we are now adjourned. Our next scheduled meeting is April 13th. Good night, everybody.